Okay, this is the Conservation Commission's meeting on Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven oh three. Um, roll call today, we have Carol Jordan, Bob Shabbett, Jackie Koolig, Nora Jones, Marilyn Schreiber and Patty Phillips are excused, and I'm here Kathy Demers. Uh, do I hear a motion to seat Nora? Or maybe Marilyn?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any second, thank you Jackie. I'm just, and I'm also scribing tonight, so as a secretary, so you guys will have to wait a moment. For me to jot info, okay. All right, minutes approval of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of January seventeenth.
Second.
I'll second.
Thanks Bob. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So move, thank you. All right. So I don't see anyone, I mean Laura Rodriguez is here and she's gonna be on our under new business as well as Steve Ozier. I don't see anybody else present to speak tonight. So when we get down to those items, um, we'll have Steve and Laura uh, talk to us. Uh, finance Carol, you went to the Board of Finance meeting last week, how'd it go?
I don't know, I told them they got, we're getting a pretty good deal since this was the thirteenth year in a row, we'd ask for the same amount of money, which is quite a bargain with inflation and uh, yeah, I did mention it, the collaborations with the library and uh, and possible need to verify some of the boundaries, which were issues that that were a little bit different. I also made clear that that the uh, distribution of of the request um, was uh, not necessarily exactly how we would spend the money, that that would change depending on circumstances, um, but it was a was not very lengthy. Actually, what's really, there was a lot of interesting issue was the uh, elections, the registrars were there and um, and how the uh, problems that they're gonna have with the new requirements for early voting.
Yeah.
Interesting, but.
Okay, well, thank you.
There were not many questions, but and a couple of compliments on on all we do as volunteers, so.
Oh, good to hear. Um, Jackie, I see that your hand is up. Is that something you wanted to say, or?
Uh, no, I didn't mean to put my hand up.
Well, it's a friendly hand.
I don't, I don't actually know how to do that.
Oh, it must be under reactions. Sometimes you can put your hand up that way, I don't know if maybe, uh, thank you, is it? Okay, you know what, I'm sorry.
I see it now.
Yeah, okay, all right. Um, Carol, do you wanna give us a treasurer's report, just a?
No change from last year, we still have the same balance of nine hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents. No activity this month.
Okay, and I just wanna add to that under finance, so we keep track of this, that um, we still have three thousand one hundred and seventy four dollars and seventy eight cents left in ARPA funds that we can use for um, maintenance boardwalks, things like that at the park and on.
Thirty one seventy four fifty eight?
Uh, seventy eight. Three one seven four seventy eight.
Okay, fifty eight.
Oh, really? Okay. All right, well, we'll figure that one out.
That now.
Twenty twenty cents somewhere.
But we, uh, I think, you know, we probably need to start thinking about major, you know, plans, whether we need, what what major things there are to be repaired because, as I understand it, we have to commit to things by the end of two thousand and twenty four and complete work by the end of two thousand and twenty six. So, you know, we need to look seriously at whether we need to replace the the Boy Scout Bridge or, you know, more and repair it or whatever, and any other major things, so that we can make make full use of the ARPA money that we have.
Right. Um, I did um, ask um, Ralph Toulis, uh, who's a license engineer, professional engineer, if he might take a look at the Boy Scout Bridge with us and um, kinda give us some feedback on that, and he said he'd be willing to do that.
I'd known that, I'd have hit him up when we were at the, at the uh, getting rid of our trash today, this afternoon, I saw Rob.
Yeah, just steer him down to the park, Carol, next time. Okay, new business, um. Let's talk a little bit about program collaboration with uh, Steve at the library. Hi Steve, do you wanna give us a little update about what's going on this summer and what kinds of things we can work on together?
Yeah, no, um, things have been kinda chugging along, I'm actually trying to get ahead as much as possible, I'm gonna be away for a couple of weeks in March for a honeymoon trip, so. But, but we are still moving ahead, we have um, CZR Reptiles is doing our kickoff event. Um, we actually have a local author, Martin Podscotch, in July that we'll be paying an honorarium to, that's gonna do a presentation on his uh, book about the Connecticut Civilian Conservation Corps, I believe we had sit on July twentieth with him. Um, and then our finale program is with the, sorry, just pulling up an email here, it was with the Traveling Lantern Theater Show, they have a program called the, I believe the search of the, yeah, I think the search for the cacapo, and it's a kind of globe trotting program that highlights the importance of conservation and protection of wildlife and endangered species. Um, so those are some of the bigger highlights of the summer reading. We're utilizing iReads, which their theme is read, renew, repeat, which is why a lot of our focus is on conservation this year. Um, did have a meeting a couple of week, weeks ago with the uh, Joshua's Trust Organization, um, cuz they were interested in doing similar to what I kinda provided here, an opportunity for the Conservation Commission to do um, a potential, you know, summertime, we usually do once a month, a storytime, followed by a craft, and one of the ideas this year was to um, you know, get out into the community with the library, so doing a storytime at um, possibly Fenton Ruby or another conservation area, and then a short hike with families, um, so Joshua's Trust was interested in there. I'm probably gonna butcher, I think it's Shane Roche's property.
Yeah.
So they were looking to um, host a program there, so that's our, our intention is to finalize a date with them either in July or August to do that storytime and hike. And so, yeah, that was, one of the ideas was working with the Conservation Commission during the summer to do uh, one event for the other month where we could do a storytime um, that would be themed around conservation, uh, provide an opportunity for a member or members of the Conservation Commission to introduce themselves to attendees and let them know your purpose and your service to the town, and then kinda do a s- a short, usually about like an hour guided hike through a property. I think when I was looking at trails, Fenton Ruby is obviously one of the more notable ones and has a relatively robust parking, um, and the Taylor Pond Trail, which is about a mile, might be a reasonable pace for especially younger kids or kids that may be carried by parents to to traverse.
Yeah.
And and then I think as was mentioned, there was the uh, opportunity for um, co-funding or sponsoring a program. Um, I wasn't aware, though I hadn't looked at the minutes yet for Board of Finance, if there was any concerns about sponsoring a program, but uh, we do have on the books, um, Mary Beth Cacer from Horizon Wings for July thirteenth, and they have a program on threatened and endangered uh, uh, raptors or birds.
Okay, great. So the two things that it sounds like you would like us to consider would be, one is helping perhaps to fund um, that program from Horizon Wings, and number two would be to work on partnering to do a guided hike um, at Ben Ruby Park. Um, after, so it'd be after a storytime, so the families would gather at the library first, is that how it goes, or?
Um, so the way we were hoping, as and of course it also is dependent on uh, the weather, but one thought is, I believe I've, I've been to the park before, there's kind of like a pollinator garden or a small picnic area that we could, you know, convene, and and one thing that I spoke with Joshua's Trust, and I would probably impress upon people too, is to encourage carpooling both for um, you know, lack, you know, for the parking situation as well as kind of an environmentally friendly option, um, to have, you know, any groups of parents that are gonna meet, to meet at the library, but then drive to Fenton Ruby, um, and then do the storytime there, kinda out in the wild and kinda give kids the opportunity to roam around, and then from there, yeah, then have the opportunity to meet with the meet or introduce the Conservation Commission to residents, um, and then, yeah, then do the guided hike.
Okay. All right. Sounds like a good idea. Um, I, I just wanted to let Conservation Commission members to know that um, James Calligan from Park and Rec was also interested in trying to partner with the Conservation Commission to do a guided hike, you know, sometime this summer, I don't know if it's something we wanna put all together um, with the library and with Park and Rec, I mean, do you think that would make more sense?
I don't know, it's, it's, it seems like when we've been out there before Kathy, uh, when we had that geology hike, if you get too many people out there with it as a large group, it just gets strung, people get strung out and people don't hear what's uh, being uh, talked about. So I think maybe two groups separately. It's just my thought on that.
Okay. Yep, Carol.
Yeah, I, I, one thought that I had would be maybe doing an event um, at um, over, over on Mason Road and do the, the loop trail, the, the, the easier to traverse trails, the one that goes from the parking lot uh, up to the blue trail, circle around, and then maybe do the, the uh, split rock trail, uh, the new split rock trail. Would that be a possibility? That would be one of the easier hikes, I don't, we think we wanna have anything, particularly if it's, it's for kids uh, that goes down steep hills on um, on the other trails there, but there, a lot of people are just, aren't familiar with those those trails, and it would be nice, and Alton and Talmage properties, might be nice to see if we could uh, do something there. It would be parking issues, but, but then there are places people park along the road, so, and we could encourage carpooling there as well, just a thought. So maybe two different things.
Okay. Any other thoughts from commission members? Okay, so, um, in terms of guided hikes, is there anybody on the commission that would be interested in helping out in terms of leading a hike at either uh, Fenton Ruby or down on, off of Mason Road sometime this summer?
Because.
I wouldn't help out, I'm, I'm not around in August.
Okay.
Pretty sure I'll be around in July.
Okay. All right, would that work out Steve for a guided hike?
Yeah, I was double checking the dates, um, could possibly do, yeah, so the first Saturday of July is the sixth, um, which may or may not be good, I know, uh, obviously the Fourth of July holiday is on a Thursday this year, so there might be a lot of celebrations and days off that year, that day. There may be an opportunity with people planning parties throughout the weekend that, you know, they may say, oh, let's just go for a quick hike before we go to the, go to a picnic or go to a party, so that would work. Um, and that would also help with deciding and letting the Joshua's Trust Group have um, the other month in August, which I believe is the third.
What, what's the last day of school?
The last day of school, I want to say it's somewhere before, I, I, we have the kickoff on the twenty second for the summer reading, so I wanna say we set it up to be at least a week after the last day of school, so it might be like the thirteenth or fourteenth, depending on any s- snow days if we get anymore. I can double check.
I was just thinking maybe the last Saturday in June, if that, you know, if school, if school is out and we avoid the, the uh, July.
Which is also.
Weekend.
Yeah, which is also definitely an option, um, e- even though we have it traditionally as the first Saturday of the month, you know, summer reading is always a time for special programs, so I'd be flexible with that as well.
Um, Nora, would you be willing to work with Steve on that? You guys could figure out what you wanna do for dates perhaps and a theme? Would that be okay? Sure. And as far as the Park and.
Yeah, as, as long as I'm around, I think I'm away the last week in, I'm away the fifteenth of June. Um.
Well, maybe.
Pretty, like, right now, July is open, August is not.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, the two of you, if you wanna look at dates possibly together, if it's not working out, you can maybe let us know, we still have a lot of time.
Yeah.
Uh, to figure that out, and I can work with Park and Rec, um, you know, and look at some other date that, you know, one of us can be available for their interest in, in doing a hike. And maybe we can do that down off of Mason Road, Carol, um, that hike, you know, for Park and Rec, something a little different.
Okay, whatever, um, it was just a thought, cuz if we, I think, I think it, it would be nice to get more people used to uh, hiking in the areas other than, than Fenton Ruby, because it's, everybody knows that and it's a great place, but, but there are some really nice trails in the other part of town, and it'd be nice to get more people familiar with those. Um, the other question I had is, for the Horizon Wings program, we would probably be taking that, paying them in um, July for that, so that would come out of our, out of next year's fiscal year budget, probably. Unless they need to be paid, paid in advance.
So they do, I'm just double checking my emails, um, cuz I contacted them back in November and they thankfully provided a discount for locking in well in advance, so they send an invoice, uh, one month in advance. So there is an opportunity, I think that the program is, well, I believe I'd said it was July thirteenth, so there is an opportunity, they might, they could send the invoice in June if you wanted to pay it out at the end of this fiscal year, instead of um, taking that initial uh, deduction in the next fiscal year.
Right, depending, yeah, cuz we, we, we have quite a bit of money left at this point, so um, there might be a way of, of helping, if we could pay for it um, out of this year's fiscal year budget, it might make sense, and then we would need to agree on what, what our share would be of the two hundred and seventy five uh, totals, um, lost, so.
Yeah, and I can, and I can also reach out to them if you wanna even sooner, I could say, hey, we have a, a sponsor that's looking to um, help cover this sooner, you know, would you be willing to send the invoice in May?
Yeah, no, I think that June would be fine, anything.
Okay.
At the end, yeah, the fiscal, and we have a better idea of where we stand, just in case something comes up between now and then, where we, you know, we would need to spend some, some funds on a, on a, a, a repair that have, needs to happen or something like that.
Yeah, and I did verify the last day of school tendively is the fourteenth, so that's the Friday, so it's about, about a week and one day before the summer reading kicks off.
Okay.
Does anybody wanna make a motion in terms of um, what we would like to appropriate to help with paying for Horizon Wings, whether we wanna pay for the full amount or partial amount, or anybody wanna make a motion? So Bob, you're um, muted.
Oh, do you need to know how much the, the amount was? I think I provided it last time, but I didn't.
Two seventy five?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um. So what were you looking for? I, I'm thinking somewhere in the two twenty five to two fifty, I mean, um, in one twenty, wherever. Yeah, one, one twenty five to, to one fifty, um, as our share.
Yeah, no, if, if one fifty is reasonable, um, any, any support is obviously appreciated, the friends cover the remainder of our programming budget, so no, a- a- any amount that's uh, amenable to the group, you know, is obviously really appreciated by us, and we'd certainly make a point of recognizing um, you all at the beginning of the program, uh, as co-sponsors.
So Carol, your um, mo- motion is to appropriate a hundred and fifty dollars, is that what I heard?
Like, you know, hundred, hundred and twenty five, hundred and fifty, whatever the, you know, something in that range.
Okay, but you, if, are you making a motion, you have to be.
No.
We're having discussion then, okay. Anybody else? Um, Bob, you had started to say something, go ahead.
I think a hundred and fifty dollars is uh, reasonable. I mean, we've been giving money back the past number of years, so.
And, you know, I suppose the other thing is if we get to June and we have a lot of money left, um, could we make an additional motion at that point to add some money to that?
Sure, or to set, you know, um, actually Bob, last year we had, all we had left was fourteen dollars, so. So, but uh, so although there have been many years when we have had money, last year was not one of them.
Yeah.
Um, but um, so we could do that as well, then if we did have more money in June, Carol.
Yeah, we could adjust that, we might, might adjust that, um, but I think, I think at this point, we probably need to, to be a little bit cautious, although we do have a, a pretty solid balance right now. We don't know what else is gonna come up. But I, you know, I think.
So, I, I move that we spend, that we uh, spend a hundred and fifty dollars to help uh, co-sponsor uh, the uh, bird program with the uh, library.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so moved. All right, so Steve, what we can do is maybe um, you know, check in with you beginning of June, um, you know, look at what we have left in our budget, and then there might be a possibility, but at least now, there's a commitment for a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, no, that, that is obviously great, really greatly appreciated, thanks for the, the support and the affirmative vote, um, yeah, as we get closer, any updates are greatly appreciated, and um, I'll take those numbers back to our co-directors, they usually work with the library, the friends of the library when it comes to allocating funds, um, and we'll kinda figure out the logistics from there.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, and, and we're looking at the moment, um, intending to try and pay that out of, of this year's operating budget, um, if possible, okay.
And I've also made a note to reach out to Nora about the programming and either shoot for maybe the end of the month, I think the twenty ninth is the last Saturday, or um, before the holiday, or the sixth after the holiday for uh, potential guided hike and storytime.
Okay. And we're thinking about doing that at Taylor, on the Taylor Pond Trail. Sounds like, okay.
Yeah, if that, if that works, we can obviously adjust, but I figure um, you know, average pace probably for a child and families might be under two miles an hour, so, especially if there's a lot of stopping and pointing out and wandering, so my guess is that, that roughly one mile loop will be sufficient for a lot of parents and kids.
That, that's one that's often walked by school groups and, and, and other, other um, family oriented hikes.
And we do have the guide that um, that we do have the guide that's posted at the park too, you know, that can be used as, you know, adjunct, you know? Um, we could even provide a, a guide to every child, I think we still quite, have quite a few left at the um, Town Office Building. You know, whoever.
But, but not to take away with them?
To take away with them, possibly, I mean, we don't, couldn't consider it, um, depending, well, it's just something, or people will know it's there if they wanna refer to it.
To it, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, we might wanna, you know, say it's there, if you wanna come and walk this again. Please turn in your copy, and so there'll be one there for you, when you come again.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that sounds great.
About, yeah, that's, that's another thing, you know, depend, that we could, if, if we wanted to use some of our money from this year's budget to get more copies of that, provided we don't need the money for anything else between now and the end of the year.
And, and Nora, if, if, when you and Steve are talking, if there's anything else you think that would be helpful to have, um, you know, at the walk, um, you know, you can bring that up to it, uh, future meetings, you know, if there's some things that we can help to purchase, you know, inexpensive things, um, that's also an option, you know, seeds for the kids, you know, pollinator garden seeds, things like that.
And we have the um, we have access to that kit, so I could bring the beaver, the skull and the hilt.
Um, yeah.
Bring a couple of those things too.
Yeah. That would be great. Okay, sounds good.
Oh, one other thing I forgot to mention, um, it's still pending, but another program, just in case you guys wanna be aware of, it's, we're trying to expand and have more, have at least one program for each age demographics, like one for kids, one for, you know, teens, one for adults, so we're actually trying to uh, cash out a teen program, if you have any teens within your uh, conservation, you know, group or in terms of volunteers or family and friends, um, Sacred Rhythms Homestead in town, uh, we're looking to work with them to do what's called a uh, air plant crystal arrangement, so they can kinda, you take a pieces of metal and wrap it around a crystal, and then you kinda create a little cusp that uh, an air plant, like a succulent, can fit into, and it's apparently pretty sustainable, it only really needs warm weather and the occasional sprits of water, so um, that's just another program that I think we're looking to try and align for July or August.
Hmm, okay, that sounds interesting. Great, and, and Steve, anything that you have to, um, that we're kinda co-sponsoring with, we'll put on our website, and um, uh, you're probably really familiar with, the Board of Education has um, the backpack for the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, as, as we, as we get closer to the end of the school year, once we have a lot of these things wrapped up and some flyers made up, there'll probably be a pretty substantial digital backpack for the end of school year to try and promote kids to do continued learning and continued reading and enrichment throughout the summer, so, yeah, no, absolutely, we'll, we'll get it to them as well as the uh, the Wellington Wire.
Okay, great, all right, and are you familiar with the neighbors newspaper that um, is kind of local, sometimes they'll run things for free too?
Yeah, I believe um, Deb, one of our co-directors has uh, provided information to reach out to them, I've also made an effort to try and uh, boost some of the posting on various social medias, uh, to some, some success, you know, Facebook, uh, Twitter, X, whatever it's called now, Instagram, um, and then we also have a, an account with Patch for Stafford Wellington, so we try to post a lot of our events and press releases there to try and just spread as much of it out as possible.
Yeah, and we can post things um, at Fenton Ruby Park too, we have the kiosk there, and over on Mason Road, we have a kiosk, so if you have flyers of any kind, you wanna send to me, we'll.
Yeah. No, that'd be great.
All right. Anything else? Before we let you go?
I'm all set, but no, thank you guys again, I really appreciate the support and uh, working together.
Okay, take care, thanks for all you do.
You too, thank you.
All right, so moving on, um, under membership, uh, Laura Rodriguez is with us here tonight, I know some of you know Laura. Um, Laura, maybe the best thing to do would be just to ask you to introduce yourself and a little bit of your background and your in, and why you're interested in being on the commission.
Laura, um, so, yeah, as Kathy said, many, many of you do know me, um, I was the seventh grade and then seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Hall Memorial for twelve years, um, and, you know, so science is a passion of mine, the environment is a passion of mine. Um, I left there to go to the STEM Magnet School down in Wyndham, and actually it was through having a student teacher, um, I got the opportunity to go back to UConn and get my PhD in science education, and so I am now a professor at Eastern, um, teaching teachers how to teach. Um, so I've been, I was on the Board of Ed uh, this last term, and, and, and I did lose in November. Um, and, but I thought, yeah, but, but the, the reason I'm including that is simply because I, I'm on the Scholarship Committee and I was on Board of Ed and that was all I could do. Um, but not being on the Board of Ed, um, as I was going through minutes, um, I saw that you were looking for, that you, that you had some vacancies, and I thought it's time to maybe go to my science roots, um, and, and do something along those lines, cuz all of my volunteer work has, has been really strictly education. Um, and so I reached out to Kathy, and um, and that's why I'm here, because I really would like to start contributing and working um, with the other passion of mine, uh, what, you know, which is uh, the environment and working towards sustainability and all that good stuff.
That's great. Anybody have any questions for Laura? Do you have, go ahead, Bob?
No, I have, I have nothing, I've known Laura for during her stint from UConn, so.
No, I think it's uh, it's really great to have Laura taken interest, and we would uh, really welcome her presence on the commission.
Laura, do you have any questions for us about the commission or some of the things that we've been involved in? I, I think I had sent you uh, our last minutes, uh, just so you kinda could see some of the things that we, you know, have been more recently involved with.
Yeah, I read through the minutes, um, I think I was always kind of aware through Peter and Judy Anderson, what was going on with the commission also. Um, the other thing I didn't mention was. What was going on with the commission also. Um, the other thing I didn't mention was, was, was another connection. Um, when I was doing my dissertation at UConn, I was on a program there. Uh, which my, my dissertation is on intergenerational collaboration on conservation projects. Um, I was looking at students' STEM identity, but the, the program at UConn was pairing up high school students with. Adults, many of whom worked on the conservation commissions in their local towns as well as other nonprofits. And they worked together to learn uh, geospatial technologies, conservation science and develop their own community projects, so. You know, this is something that I'd really kind of like to get back into, so I don't really, I don't. I, you know, just reading through minutes, I kind of know what you're involved in. I'm excited to come on board and learn more about it and um. And see how I can contribute to what you're doing.
Oh, that's great. A lot of our time has been um, dedicated, I think, to managing some of the open space properties, including Fenton Ruby Park, and then we. More recently acquired some open space off of Mason Road. I don't know how familiar you are with those parcels, but. Um, you know, we've been involved with trail uh, building and maintenance there, and we do have stewards for the properties. Um, which is nice. We've got some other volunteers that help with those things. I think um, many of us have felt too that we wanted to have more commission time spent at. Um, be more proactive on identifying other potential open space properties in town. Um, as well as looking back at redoing our natural resource inventory. Um, we do have the plan of conservation and development in town. It, it has to be renewed every ten years. And I believe that's gonna be due again in um, twenty twenty-eight. But I think planning and zoning is gonna probably start to work on that, you know, well ahead of time, because they'll need to probably contract with. Uh, someone to work on the texts and the maps and so on, but it would be great if we could start to think in terms of, you know, what our. Projects will be um, to collaborate on that, and it would be wonderful to have some of your background. Uh, knowledge, you know, to help us with that. So, that, those are all some things that are probably coming down the pike for us. Alright. Anything else anybody wants to add? Like to um, entertain a motion to recommend, and I, and I wrote this uh, motion. Um. So we could come to some agreement, that we move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they appoint Laura Rodriguez as a regular member. Of the Conservation Commission to fill a current vacancy that has a three-year term. You'd basically be taking over, um, and maybe I should back up just one minute before I go further. Nora, I want to double check with you because you're an alternate right now. Do you want to bump up and be a regular member? Do you want to stay as an alternate? Because that would, you know, in terms of the, this spot that Laura would take, that would um, determine that, so.
I think I'm gonna stay as an alternate.
Okay, you're, you're sure about that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so then the regular vacancy is open, um, so let me repeat what I was started to say. Um, so I would like to entertain a motion to move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they appoint Laura Rodriguez. As a regular member of the Conservation Commission to fill a current vacancy that has a three-year term of twelve oh-two. Two thousand and twenty-two to twelve oh-one, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, so basically Laura, you would be taking the, the vacancy that was left when Peter left. Peter Anderson left our commission, because he, he fulfilled his term up until twelve one twenty-two. Um, and then there, there was a new vacancy that opened after that.
Okay.
Um. Is that, is that um, something that you're amenable to? It would be a three-year term that would um. At this point, would basically be two years that would end at twenty twenty-five, but you'd be up for reappointment then.
That's fine, yeah, that would be great.
Okay. So.
Are you making that motion Kathy, or are you looking for someone else to make it?
If someone else wants to make it, I just wrote it so it would, it would be more complete, because we're gonna have to send this on to the Board of Selectmen. So, and that's what we would do, Laura. We, we recommend to the Board of Selectmen and then they bring it up at their next um, regularly scheduled meeting. They'll probably send you a letter in the mail, um, inviting you to come uh, to the meeting. You don't have to. But, you know, if you want to go, they may ask you a few questions. Um, I don't think they'll grill you on anything. Um, and I'm sure there won't be any problem with them appointing you if, if you're interested, so. But anyway, if somebody would like to um, make a motion on that.
I make that, I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do I hear second?
I'll second.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? So moved. Alright, thank you, everyone. Alright. Alright, Laura, we'll send this on to the Board of Selectmen. Um, you are welcome to continue, you know, um. To hang out with us if you want to see how things are going.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Alright, great, thank you. We're really, I'm excited. I, I know everybody else is too, thank you. Um, under old business, Wilford Farms and the Hall Forest Harvest off of Meadow Lane. Uh, Jackie and I uh, met recently with Austin Harmon from Hall. He invited us to go out to take a look at the trees that were marked on the conservation easement. Um, so we did go out with him and looked, they had already started some of the timber harvest and other areas. Around the conservation easement, and we did look at the setbacks that he had um, identified from the stream and the vernal pool and. Um, things seemed to be, you know, well-marked. Um, Jackie, do you want to make any other comments about it?
Um, I just, uh, I think he marked very conservatively, um, you know, they were saying that they would. Uh, mark no more than thirty percent, and I think they were well under thirty percent in the conservation easement area and. Uh, also on the rest of the property, it was not a very aggressive harvest, so I thought it looked good.
The other thing we did verify with um, Austin is that he, after the harvest is done, he is gonna place. Markers on the conservation easement borders as well as the borders of the open space property that the town owns. And we did provide some markers for him to do that, so he said he would take care of that, which is very helpful.
And they're, they're the, the, the open space, the ones with the uh, owl, let's say, open space, which.
Right, yeah, well, it doesn't say open space, it says conservation area. Um, and the, the conservation easement markers say conservation easement.
And these aren't easements, we want the, yeah.
Right, on the open space um, boundaries, we gave him different markers and those say conservation area. Those are the ones that we generally have been using.
Right, on the town-owned parcels.
Correct, yeah, yeah, and he's gonna do his best on the boundaries. I mean, there's some portion of those open space parcel boundaries that. Jackie and I had difficulty, we couldn't really identify where the pins were. Um, and so he's only gonna mark the ones that we were certain about.
So, so we still might want to look into clarifying some of the boundary there.
Yeah. Yeah, we may need, we'll definitely need um, a surveyor to do that, um, to define those boundaries. I mean. As far as we can see, there's really no encroachment at this point. Um, there was just an old compost bin that seemed to be maybe on the border. Um, but they weren't using it, there was no junk, there was nothing else out there that was of concern, so I don't, I don't think it's a. You know, have to get this done right now issue. Alright, properties management, Fenton Ruby Park, uh, Dropney Sanctuary. Um, Patty had, you know, just sent me a few reports, um, through the weeks. She's been walking a lot of the trails. There didn't seem to be any kind of real issues out there. I haven't heard any reports, negative reports around any of the stewards. But we still need a steward for the Ruby Trail and the Langhammer Trail. So I don't know if um, anybody's had a chance to perhaps think about that or talk to any potential volunteers. Okay, we'll just let that hang fire for now. If you know of anybody who might be interested in stewarding, um. Either of those trails or both together, because the Langhammer spur comes off the Ruby. Um, you know, you can talk to them about it, or you can send them my way, I'd be happy to talk to them and walk the trail with them at some point.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try and get in touch with, things have been a little strange around here. My husband is finally free of, of all his tubes. Got rid of the wound back and the tick line, so he's, um, things are looking up. We make a little better sleep, we have been for the last five weeks.
Gosh, yeah, you guys have been through a lot. Uh, Nolton Preserve, Talmage Conservation Track, um, there've been no issues that I've heard about from stewards on those trails. Uh, town development, anybody want to share any news they know of for planning and zoning in the wetlands or ZBA?
Um, uh, planning and zoning last night, um. You know, we started talking about uh, um. The upcoming redo of uh, the P O C D. And uh, for uh. With that in mind, uh, the Economic Development Commission has selected a vendor. To do the strategic development, um. Um, plan in town to get a better understanding of uh, what's possible. Um, and I think that's a, it's going to be community. Input-based, a lot of it. So, for us that have been involved with the plan of conservation and development, when we started. Twenty years ago with that first one, we started out with community workshops and such. And as Mike described it, uh, Mike DeMato last night described it, uh. That's sort of the uh, take they're gonna have, they want community input. Uh, I know when we had the um. Warehouse uh, issue, uh, everybody certainly didn't want anything like that, but. People have spoken up quite a bit about what they would like to have in town. And with this uh, study that EDC is going to have done. I think it's going, that they're gonna try to make the citizens of Wellington understand. What is possible and what isn't possible. When it comes to uh, businesses and their overall business plan. And a lot of that has to do with density of population in order for that to happen. And uh, so that's what's coming up and I think they're. I don't know when their kickoff is exactly, but I think they're gonna start the process uh, next week with their consultant. Uh, and them, um, I'm sure we'll be, the community will be notified with the, from the town website. When uh, they're looking to get uh, groups together for community input.
Bob, did um, did the Planning and Zoning Commission discuss anything about what they plan to do? I mean, how they're gonna approach redoing the P O C D? Are they going to contract with someone?
They, they will, um, that's, that's the logical thing uh, to do. Um, considering that we already have a plan in place. Uh, but I'm sure it's going to have with our input and well as the Conservation Commission's input. On that, um, I think. What's become pretty aware to uh, Mike and he's. Kind of enlightening, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission is that uh. Although everybody relies on the P O C D, um, the. Conservation Commission has done an awful lot on the conservation end of it. But insofar as planning in town, it's, the way it's been developed has been. Vague, shall I put it, nothing specific. And what they're gonna try to do with this study that the EDC is uh, having done. Is to get more specific insofar as areas and what types of development. Could be expected. In a community the size of ours. Uh, so there, I think the push is going to be to have a little bit more on the development end. Of the uh, P O C D this time around, with, with it not being as vague.
And more, more attention to the, what kinds of development the town would.
What kinds and where, uh.
And, and what kinds of development the community can support in terms of its population and.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and, you know, uh, I'm sure that some, it's gonna come in to the mix is. You know, what's going on at the exit where uh, Loves is and TA. Uh, there's already two large parcels that's, that are zoned for development. And, you know, I, we're going to be discussing, I'm sure, what's the size? I mean FedEx is about three hundred thousand square feet right now. And uh, you know, from what we heard. When the um, warehouse was here, from some people that worked in the industry were familiar with. What kind of development can happen when you don't have services of public water and public sewage. Uh, I think that that is going to uh, have a big determination on uh. The size of what's uh, gonna happen. Um, and even with FedEx's size, the state's just upgraded their requirements. And FedEx has already gotten the folks that worked with Loves on their waste disposal. Working with FedEx to upgrade theirs, which is gonna be a multimillion dollar uh, endeavor. At, on, at their facility. So. Things aren't getting easier, they're getting more difficult and more stringent, um, because of everyone becoming aware.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We haven't, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we haven't really done our natural resource inventory, we haven't updated that for many years. And also the open space map was last on in twenty sixteen. There's not that many additional parcels, but um, you know, certainly we, you know, I'd be happy to check in with Mike to see. Um, you know, in the past, we've had Krag help us with the open space map, and Carol, I know you still possibly have a. Contact there with Mike Cipriano.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it might be worth just checking in to see what it would take, if, if he would still be a potential resource to us. As we move forward, because I, I don't want to wait too long to start getting prepared for this, because it'll come quickly.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I know, it's on my agenda, um, but the, and the, the main additions are, are the parcel. Um, the Talmage parcel and the uh, easement on Loves. One of the problems is that, that the um, the um, land use to, office doesn't keep. Um, a record of uh, conservation easements and um, the. Um, tab, rack, lot, land records have not been indexed for a number of years, so it's much more difficult than it used to be. Um, you used to be able to go to the land index and where there's an easement to the town, readily identify what type of easement it was, whether it was a road easement or. You know, that kind of thing, so it's a little bit more difficult to make sure that, that we have all of those and. And unlike many maps, ours, we show the actual easement areas, just because I think it's helpful for the land use agencies. Be able to see where the actual, uh, actual restricted areas are located. Um, so, you know, that's, that's where the, the hangup is, trying to do the research to identify any other uh. Conservation easements that may have, that we have not been notified by land use department, as there have been changes in personnel there.
Yeah.
Yeah, one other. Yeah, one other thing I might mention, Kathy, one of the uh, uh, things that the uh. Planning and zoning is gonna be working on this uh, year is uh, updating. The regulations for home occupations. Um, and that's basically to better define what types of activities. Um, what uh, what needs uh, required approvals? And to establish more defined standards. Um, there were some questions raised last year with a particular situation where. There's this gray area, where does it become a home occupation? And when should it be considered a commercial operation? And we're going to, the um, planning and zoning is going to try to. Get a handle on that, um, while looking at what's going on in the surrounding communities and how they handle it. Um, but it's uh. It was a question that couldn't be answered last year when, when we tried to address it. And it kept being asked and uh, we need, it needs to be addressed. Uh, so that, you know, at some point, maybe Wellington needs to have some type of an industrial park. That allows uh, home businesses that flourish and outgrow. A residential lot. Uh, that they can move on to uh, someplace that they can share their. Uh, parking of vehicles and such with uh, their comrades and not their uh, residential neighbors.
Right. Great, well, I think it's, you know, one of the things that I think will be very important for us to do is to. Um, as we did originally, when we did the natural resource inventory, we came up with some. You know, we looked at every parcel basically and we, we rated it. Um, for resource value and identified areas of town that had more critical habitat. Um, were more important to water protection. Um, and I think we have to think about this in terms of climate change now and resiliency. Um, in terms of, you know, how our forests and um, land use is going to help us to. Prevent flooding in town, you know, even working a little bit, I don't know what Public Works is looking at. Um, with the state, but in terms of just how these natural resources. We have to protect them because of climate change, but also how important they are to climate change and, and us being resilient. Um, so I think. It's important to try to identify some potential resources that can help us look at that, whether it's the um. Conservation District staff, whether it's um, Capital Region, um, Council of Government staff. You know, start to talk about, um, and maybe even to look at what other towns are doing. From their Conservation Commission standpoint or planning and zoning and the wetlands. To look ahead at these issues and how we can kind of. Uh, utilize resources that will help us to do what's best for our town. And work regionally too, because you know, we're, you know, we're part of a watershed, you know, that's a drinking water watershed. Um, so, I'll try to put some feelers out before our next meeting and just get it, try to get a sense of what other towns. And commissions maybe are looking at, um, and any resources that we could plug into as we start to work on these issues.
I, I don't know if anybody but saw the article, I believe it's in the Current about Ashford and uh, Ashford Lake and. Um, their, their problems with their flood risk with their dam. And I was surprised to see that that could actually um, be an emergency thing in the sense that it might be life threatening because. Um, a breach of that dam could uh, reach the uh, Boy Scout Reservation, the drain to Webster Norcross. Boy Scout Reservation, which uh, has lots of activity with, with kids. And um, there, there would be flood risk there if there were a breach of that dam, it's a very interesting article.
Yeah, well, you know, we've, we've had some areas that have already washed out. You know, during some of the flooding in the past few years, um, some roads in town, culverts, you know. Um, it, it really probably hasn't threatened life and limb per se, um, but. You know, looking at how we can work together to help prevent some of these things by utilizing some of our own natural resources. So.
Life's getting more complicated.
Sure is. Um, Jackie, on the agricultural front, um, is there anything? You might want to have us look at in terms of the next plan of conservation and development?
Um, nothing that comes to mind at the moment, but I'll, I'll definitely give it some thought for uh, for the next few meetings.
Okay.
Um, are, Jackie, are you doing any farm tours? And are you looking, where, where you might be looking for some support for us, for help?
Um, there hasn't been much uh, discussion about the farm tour lately, I think it, with COVID and everything, it kind of uh, fizzled out. We're still planning to do, you know, we do an open house at our farm almost every year. But, yeah, nothing with uh, the other farms as far as I know.
No, just thought.
Would you say?
If you needed any support.
Thank you, yeah, I'll uh, definitely. Reach out to the other farms in town soon and see if, if folks wanna do that again, but. My guess is it's, it's probably not gonna happen for the spring at least.
Yeah, okay.
In general, Jackie, would you say that the number of farms in town um, is less, more, the same? As in the past five years?
Uh, I've heard of more small farms starting, but I, you know, I haven't actually met a lot of folks. Uh, starting new farms, um, and then some of the other farms that were participating in the farm tour. Um, are, most are still around, uh, one, I think, has kind of closed their retail operations. Um, yeah, so it's, it kind of fl- is fluctuating, but I wouldn't say there's more or less than there was.
And then how about?
Trying hard to say.
Yeah, I mean, how about regionally as well, when you're doing the farmer's market, would you say there's more people participating now or less or?
Um, I, I would say about the same at our, at our markets, uh, maybe more. Um. There's um, been more vendors recently doing things like mushrooms and microgreens. Where you don't actually need a lot of land to grow them, you can do them indoors, um. So, yeah, I guess I've seen a little more of, of that type of business starting up.
Interesting. All right, um, anything else for town development that anybody wanted to share? We'll move on to collaborative organizational news and communication. Um, I had sent out uh, the email flyer on the Connecticut Land Conservation Council's. Uh, annual conference, which will be Saturday, March twenty third at Wesleyan University from eight to five thirty. Um, if anybody's interested in participating, any of the members, um. And want to get in your registration by March first, it would be sixty-five dollars. Um, and then after March first, it's gonna go up to eighty for members. So if anybody's interested, um, you know, you could register and then. Come back to commission the following month and we can vote to reimburse you for that registration, so. That's um, they're having a lot of really wonderful speakers, so if anybody's interested, you know. Maybe people could carpool too, if more than one of you wants to go. What's that? I thought there was a question, sorry. Um, and then the second thing I wanted just to.
People, yeah, Kath, people, um, Kathy, did, did they, uh, your email have the site? Or maybe you could send to uh, Laura a copy of the, that, of how to, how to look up the information on, on that. Uh, event and what workshops there are and um, there are funds available. Um, we can reimburse you if you want, and we're, we are members of C L C C, so you get the member price.
I can send that to you, Laura, if you'd like to. It's um.
That would be, that would be fine, I, I, I have been to it a number of times when I, when I was a doctoral student. Um, and, and yeah, it's amazing, I'm, what I, what was the date again?
Uh, March twenty-third, it's a Saturday, and it's at Wesleyan, Middletown.
We've got our spaghetti dinner for scholarship. I can promote that right now, anybody needs some tickets?
A morning workshop and something, boil spaghetti and eat.
Do it all.
Yeah, they, I think this is um, last year, I'm not, I forget if they did it hybrid or not. Um, but during COVID, they, they did it online, so that was even more, you know, it was easier for people to get to. Um, the second thing I wanted to bring up under this category was, um, as I mentioned earlier, James Calligan from Park and Rec. Uh, would like to collaborate on a guided hike this summer, and um, he said he'd be willing to. Attend one of our meetings between now and May and um, talk a little bit more about what his idea was for that. So I, I'll see if I can invite him for March or April. Uh, regional pollinator pathway initiatives, uh, there's nothing that I know of at this uh, moment that's going on regionally. I was thinking maybe it'd be good to check back with Connie Bedan from the Girl Scouts and just find out. What the girls are, you know, planning this summer, if they're going to be weeding and possibly watering the garden if needed. Uh, through the summer, and if they're not available, we can kind of brainstorm how we can perhaps get some other volunteers out there. Anybody else have any information on pollinator pathway theme items you wanna share? Open space opportunities, so um, the property on Burma Road. Um, still working with the First Selectman and Mike De Mato. Uh, to see what we can come up with, with the attorney. There was a suggestion that the landowners that a butt Lustig Road. In Ashford, that we could work with them to get a right-of-way agreement. And when Mike looked at it further, uh, with the town of Ashford. Uh, he felt it would be important that the town of Ashford itself, because it's still kind of murky as to. The town of Ashford having discontinued that road, whether or not they still have some stake in it. Uh, in terms of also that they would need to sign this right-of-way agreement, so we're still working on that, it's kind of a slow process. I'll let you know when I hear more. Um, and then. We did discuss that historic parcel on Jared Sparks Road. Um, and I did contact the tax assessor and do have the landowner contact information. Um, so, I was gonna brainstorm, uh, perhaps with Bob Shabbitt because he's been involved. Uh, at looking at that parcel historically with Mark Palmer. And maybe come up with a draft of a letter we could send to the landowner about the commission's interest in. Um, maybe working with them to conserve it in the future, so. If anybody else has any thoughts or ideas on that particular parcel.
Well, not that particular parcel, but maybe we should be working on getting the town to uh, uh. They own nineteen acres next to that parcel, and maybe we should be working and seeing if the town will put that in uh. Uh, open space, because right now it's not. And that, that might, by having that in open space, it uh, might uh. Help convince the uh, other landowner. Plus, the, the Heck property is right across the street, the old abandoned road there. And that, and the Heck property is, I don't know, about a hundred, hundred acres.
Yep.
So it, it would, it would make a nice chunk of conservation land.
As we made a trip, trip up to the land, to the uh. You call it now, not the landfill, but what, you know what I mean, on Hancock Road, there is the parcel that the town acquired. And they were, where they were, was a plan at one point to build a salt shed and the rest of that parcel was supposed to be an easement. And then they were, talked about having the, having uh, the engineer draw the lines, you know, based on, on water courses. But the impression that we had, had been given by the commission was that they, the part that was, where they were gonna put the salt shed. Would be used for that purpose and all the rest of that parcel be preserved. And I, I don't know what the status of that, but that might be something that's worth pursuing because there is a stream that goes through there. And um, we might wanna look at whether uh, a protection could be applied to a, the major part of that parcel. The salt shed never got put there, so, you know, that might be something else to look at. Because it would.
I think that's still on their wishli- that's still on their wish list, Carol.
The salt shed?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I, I think maybe get some clarification and, because I think would be better for. Uh, as a, as a, to protect, protection for the parcel, to, to basically say, here's the parcel, draw a line. This part's gonna be reserved for a parcel, possible salt shed development, and all of the rest of this will be um, protected. And, and uh, see what, just remind people that that's something that, that uh, had been discussed. And uh, that we would like to see happen, to protect that water course.
Carol, would you be willing, if you had some time, to just go back, I know it was when Christine Melhos was um. Selectman for Selectman, and maybe find some minutes on that particular item, and then I'd be happy to bring it forward.
I can look, I, I can look and see, um. And I don't know whether, I think there might, there might be a reference in there, but I don't know how complete it is in terms of what, what the discussion was. But, but my, my recollection was that it was, you know, they would, um. They were looking for our, our blessing on uh, on acquiring this, and um. I thi- I personally think rather than have, have an engineered design and, uh, based on um, setbacks and all of that. I'd like to see if that's gonna be protected, that we just protect all except the reserved area for possible construction of the shed.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
At least we could ask that, I mean, cuz I don't think there was anything, there were, there was discussion, but how, how, you know, what, there weren't firm plans.
Right.
It might want to, to argue for uh, a much simpler way of protect, of just drawing a boundary on, um. Rather than, than have all of these skinny spider webbery type. He's been areas along stream beds, that kind of thing, so.
Well, I just never, I don't think they ever really uh, developed the uh, uh, building plan for that uh, shed. They wanted it, but I don't think any plans were uh, drawn in order to figure out where it was gonna fit. Or where it was gonna be built.
But they did it, the town did acquire that parcel, right?
Yeah, they did, yeah, they did.
So, uh, you know, might be worth uh, talking with the, the new administration and, and just mentioning this. And, and what would, what would, we would like, what kind of protection we would like to see on that parcel. Um, and, you know, at least, it's something to, to remind people of. That, 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 that it, we wanna protect uh, as much of that piece of property as we can.
Well, you might wanna talk to Public Works first and see what. In, in their one to ten gotta haves, you know, where's that salt shed? And wh- what, what was the idea of, where would it be placed, have a better, better idea?
Right, but uh, you know, who knows, they, they, if they're not gonna do it, then maybe what we should be looking for is protection of the entire parcel.
Well, we can kind of start to look into.
Just say something that I happened to think about today as I was driving down Hancock Road.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that. Um, Wellington Wire, next submission is due at the end of March. Um, is anybody on the commission interested in writing a one-page? Information to put in the wire? It can be theme, any theme you want, it could be based on past submissions, we have lots of examples of things that have been put in the wire for. Um, like the spring edition, basically, um. Marilyn had written one recently on the beavers. So if anybody's interested in doing it. All right, I'll leave that open. Um, communication. I did get a letter, um, an email from Carrie Donaldson. She originally had a concern about a tree that was slated for removal on the corner of Kohler and Sharpsmill Road. Um, there was a sign on it that said it would be taken down, it was gonna be, because it um was deemed to be a hazard. And she was quite concerned that the tree still had some life to it. Um, and had emailed me to see if the commission could somehow get involved with trying to stop them from removing the tree. And then she did get back to me and said that she had worked out a compromise with the tree warden. So, it's not anything we need to take action on, but I, I did receive um those emails from her. Uh, is there anything else, any other business that people would like to add to this agenda tonight? Anything else we should think about for future agendas that you want me to add to March or April? Just let me know, you can always email me. All right, our next meeting's March twentieth via Zoom. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We'll move. Carol, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so we're going to adjourn at eight fifteen. All right, well, good to see everybody today. I hope you have a good rest of the week and a nice month.
Yeah, good seeing everybody.
Enjoy. Take care, having me.
Bye. Nice to see you, Laura. So you'll be getting that information from the Board of Selectmen when they're gonna, I believe it'll be their first meeting in March, you'll probably end up um, they'll be taking that up, yeah. And so you should be a, you know, full member by March twentieth when you come back. Okay.
Great, all right.
All right, good to see you, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye. Bye, Carol.
Bye.
Okay, take care.